Thirty seconds. Hey, stand by. Five seconds. We're ready to begin.
Great. It is Tuesday, June 11 at 6:00 PM and then call this Lacey City Council Works Session to Order. We do have one council member, excuse, council member Greenstein is not here tonight, but everyone else is present. Also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Messing Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Spoxon Indian Tribe. And with that, can I get motion to approve an amended agenda? We are amending the agenda to remove item 5C, the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan Review for a later date. Unfortunately, we have a couple of people who are gonna give that presentation who are out right now, not feeling well. So with that, can you get motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda as spoken.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? See none? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? In that motion unanimously carries, we have approved the amended agenda. First up on our management agenda is the Lot Clean Water Alliance Annual Update. And I'm gonna turn over to Councilmember Cox. Thank you, Matt, for being here.
Councilmembers and Mayor Ryder and Deputy Mayor. My pleasure to introduce Matt McMilli, who is the Executive Director of the Lacey Olympia Tom Water Thurston County Clean Water Alliance, affectionately known as LOT. Matt is here to give kind of a state of the utility address to us, to update us on various initiatives and programs and efforts that are going on. And LOT can proudly and accurately boast now that we provide the best treatment on Puget Sound. And you'll soon see why when he does his presentation. For those who are wondering about rates, they are below average in the industry. And so we're gonna be talking a little bit, or he is, about planning for the future. And this is a nice little kickoff. I've been having to wait over a month, probably six weeks, to announce that. That LOT has just won a National Design Award for its Treatment Improvement Biological Process Improvement Project. And that is one of only eight worldwide that we give them out. It's impressive. In addition to that, they won a National Environmental Achievement Award and statewide Project of the Year and a, I think I'm missing one, but another design award, State Design Award.
State Design Award, right?
Yes, right. So with no further ado, I give you Matt McMilli.
Thank you very much. That was a great introduction. I appreciate that. Thank you for having me. And so for those of you that remember, I came here last year to give a state of the utility. And we like to do that just to share with you what we're doing, where we're going, see if you have any questions. We are your wastewater treatment plant. And so I want to share with you what we've been up to. By way of an overview, I'd like to start with this. LOT, L-O-T-T. The L is Lacey, and then there's Olympia, Tom Water and Thurston County. We have four member governments and one elected official from each of the member governments sits on our board. So someone sits on our LOT board. And we meet once a month and do business. We combine the work session and the business meeting in the same meeting. So we meet tomorrow night. That's our next meeting. And our mission is to preserve and protect public health and the environment by cleaning and restoring water resources for our communities. We're a bit distinct in the sense that we were formed from four local governments. But back in 1976, LOT was actually formed as a nonprofit corporation. That was what they decided to do at the time. And, but we act in every way as a public entity. We're four governments that formed us. And so, very similar to the cities. We approach our work with failures not an option because 24 hours a day, seven days a week, every day of the year, that flow is coming down to us. And so when we do projects, anything that happens, we need to always maintain that consistent treatment to meet permit. We're highly regulated. There's a whole series of regulations from Department of Ecology and Orca and Department of Health and all sorts of things that we meet. So we're accountable on multiple levels, not only to the jurisdictions that formed LOT, but also the state and federal regulators, as well as the rate payers themselves. Our service area has about 124,000 people that are connected, and the rate payers are through the city. So here in the city of Lacey, you all connect up, let's just say a new home is built. You connect up that home to your city sewer. And then when that city sewer combines with another city or, you know, connects to a major pump station, then that's where LOT takes over. And so when you send out your bills to the city, then you charge your residents for your city sewer and also that LOT treatment fee. So we don't have our own billing department. That's through the cities. In fact, technically, the customers of LOT are the cities. We do that wholesale treatment. Some of the residents are in urban growth areas. So although they might not be in the city limits, if they're connected to the city of Lacey Sewer, then there'd be a LOT customer, for example.
Do you know if any customer has their wastewater on a meter? Is that possible? Because right now, the only way sewer is charged is based off of water consumption. But in some cases, that may, not all water may go make it to wastewater for numerous reasons, you know?
Sure.
So is there a way to meter that and to bill charge off of a wastewater meter?
There are wastewater meters. I'm not aware, and there probably are just a couple. I just have to dig into it. Probably a couple, but they would be commercial businesses, larger industrial users. Because in order to meter wastewater flow, you need to have a larger volume. There's just, it's just not as clear, right, as regular drinking water. So there are a couple. You said you might know a couple.
Residential ones are just...
Residential even that has them? Really?
Former Councilman Cockle had one, I think.
I was not aware that that was. I mean, it's certainly up to the cities.
So it's totally up, is that a city?
Mostly, yeah.
Through the city?
So, you know, for residences, LOT has a flat rate for residences that are typically one ERU equivalent residential unit. So how the cities charge that independently, I'm not sure. I have to look into that. I'm not sure. Typically, it's pretty rare, though, to answer your question.
Could I make a comment?
Please.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't make recommendations for residential wastewater meters for kind of some of the reasons that Matt was mentioning. Water meters, you know, you have pressure flow entering through a water meter, a residential water meter, and it's only water. The wastewater that exits a home, as you all know, I mean, there's dishwater, there's washing machine water, there's shower water, and there's toilet water. So it's not as pure, and it's not pressure flow, it's gravity flow. So I'm not sure how his residential meter worked, but I would definitely question the accuracy of it. And I would not support or promote residential meters for wastewater.
So, so the regulations that we operate under come from the EPA and then get passed down from ecology. And we have, our main permit is Department of Ecology. That's how we treat water to that standard. And then not only is it the discharge limits we have to meet for nitrogen, you know, oxygen, things like that, but we also have a series of monitoring and reporting requirements. So we have our own lab. We do a lot of testing, things we monitor that we're not necessarily regulated on for treatment. But that's a whole series of things that are in that permit. EPA also has a requirement for LOT to manage our capacity well and report out on how we're doing our operations and maintenance. And the way we do capacity planning at LOT is a bit different than what you might see at other cities. So some cities that have their own treatment plant, for example, do a big expansion. They might build it and then grow into it over 20 years. The way we do it at LOT is we do annual planning and we submit annual plans to the Department of Ecology. So we're constantly looking at what flows are coming to us, how's that trending, the nutrients that are coming to us. And then a lot of times, we end up delaying projects because in planning, we kind of press them more to the earlier timeframe. So we can delay some projects, but when we do have to build it, we can take advantage of the newest technology. And that was some of the awards that we won recently. I think are likely because we've been able to implement new technology. This particular project that was mentioned, you know, had been talked about for 15 years. And we finally, you know, were like, okay, now's the time. So that's our approach at LOT. So we spend a lot more time on planning.
So, and when you discharge in Budland Land, are you, where's that discharge? Isn't it, is it out towards Boston Harbor?
No, not that far. So KGY. So just to the west of KGY, like there's a pipe. I have a picture I'll show you in a second. And then it kind of takes a jog to the west, maybe in front of Anthony's area, and then heads out for another couple hundred feet. And there's diffuser pipes along there. So it doesn't come out all on one side. It actually diffuses along that pipe. Interesting. So it's more near shore, I would say, off of the tip of Budland.
There's a reason always that in my head that it was out like way down
Right.
at the end of like by Boston Harbor.
Yeah, I know. It's right in that, right in that area. I'll show you. When I get to the picture, I'll kind of show it to you. So if you come to LOT on a tour, and if you, and I'd love to show you personally, give you a tour. But if you come there and you're thinking about what happens at our main treatment plant, it is the things that you think of. We have lots of equipment. We have open tanks, processes going on, giant pumps. We get a lot of flow coming in, a bubbling brown river. Then all of a sudden, you see, you know, the water getting clearer again, and you see in these big open areas. And then we show you at the end what that clean water looks like. And that's what we do at our Budland Land Treatment Plant, our main treatment plant, is it treats 13 million gallons per day. So 13 million gallons per day, from that perspective, if you take a football field and you build a four-story building on it, the entire football field, four stories, all filled with sewage. Basically, that's what comes out to us every day. And you think about that volume, it takes a lot of infrastructure to make that clean, that clear and clean for regulations every day. So that's the majority of our cost to really spend in maintaining all of that infrastructure to keep that running. And again, we can't turn it off. You have to keep it running. So we do have the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound. We've been that way for about 30 years, but really this last upgrade, we took this a big leap. We really have, we're operating even at half of even where we're permitted on our nutrients, which builds capacity for us. So the pipe, if I can, I'll just say.
Does the water come out? That comes out, is it considered to be potable or drinkable?
No, it's not drinkable, but it's, you know, clean for all the standards. It's much, much cleaner than it came in. We do have other stuff to get it to reclaimed water that occurs kind of over in this area, and then that produces reclaimed. But then there is technology to take it all the way to potable. We just don't have it at our plant.
Gotcha.
So the pipe ends up, it leaves kind of right around here, kind of heads out, discharges kind of like out in here, takes the jog, it's kind of, it's somewhere out in here.
So there's a channel right there, you know, is it?
Yeah, you know boats. Yeah, but it's, it's protected. It's probably outside of the channel, I would think.
You think so, yeah?
Yeah. And then I just showed a picture. You can't quite see it here, but the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Plant, not to forget about that. That's in city of Lacey. So that plant takes a smaller portion of flow. So 13 million gallons a day on this plant, that plant is one and a half million gallons per day. And I'll explain more about that plant a little bit later. But that takes a portion of flow that would have come down here and makes that all into reclaimed water. So we submit for awards in order to show our performance in addition to what we have to do for regulations. Oftentimes, we're asked with state regulators and the state legislators, for example, they want us to speak and testify on how does LOT do it? Because we are the only treatment plant that's doing nutrient removal like we are right now. And there's regulations and a push to get the other 53 treatment plants to discharge into Puget Sound to do this. And so often, we give tours and we share about what we do. You know, the short of it is, is that it takes long-term, consistent investment to really get to where we are and a supportive population slash policy board. So wastewater treatment plant has evolved. This is a picture from 1957, the old Olympia plant that I found. That's probably operating at 1 million gallons per day, to put it in perspective. But the old model, and really the core of what we do, is to treat water to the regulations, right? Do it at the lowest cost, treat water, stay hidden, don't let any, you know, stay out of people's sight. So that was, I would call, cost of service. Now we're into this public health area where out of the Clean Water Act, you have more environmental protection, you have education, focus on that, you have focus on resource recovery. So that's how our Wet Science Center was born about 12 to 14 years ago, where we have probably 11,000 or 12,000 people that kind of come through our wet center. They learn about water. One school district, every school district sends their kids through our program. And then every school district, depending on, it might be sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, depending on the district. So I was able to get some numbers from North Thurston, so you could see that, to see how many kids come through that program.
So in one year?
That's, yeah, that's last year. Actually, let me clarify. That's the 23, 24 school year season, kind of up to this point with field trips. So one year. So the reuse of biogas is another, so talk about just how we reuse resources. Biogas is basically methane that comes off of our treatment process, and we use all of it. And that biogas gets turned into power and heat. We heat our buildings. We heat the Hands-on Children's Museum next door. With the green engine you see here, we can produce up to 50% of our plant-wide power just off methane. And then that heat also goes in, that methane goes in boilers to heat back our process. Biosolids is a solid material that comes off of the process. It's primarily the bacteria that we grow to do our treatment. That's land applied in Eastern Washington as part of a program that was started by farmers back 20 or so years ago. The wheat on the left is anhydrous ammonia, and the wheat on the right is biosolids. And so our staff go out there and do a visit once a year. It's a very, you know, regulated program. So beneficial use, because it's used as a soil membrane. It retains moisture and has the nitrogen and phosphorus. Reclaimed water is the third element that we recover. So irrigation, the public water features, the stream in front of the Hands-on Children's Museum. The Tom Water Golf Course uses 600,000 gallons per day of reclaimed water every day in the summer. And so, you know, building a tank in the side of the Deshues Valley there. And then the city came back in collaboration with us and put a park on top of it for an overlook. And that's our approach, is if we're gonna build infrastructure like that, we'd like to integrate it to make it usable with the public. But drop for drop, reclaimed water can be used instead of potable. Out here in Lacey, there's the groundwater replenishment. So the Hawks Prairie Recharge Basins, it goes, the water goes through, from the Martin Way Plant, goes through a series of wetland ponds. This is an old photo. It's grown up a lot since then. And then it goes into the recharge basins, which are in the front part of this picture, recharges groundwater.
It's a beautiful park.
Yeah, it's kind of turned into a little oasis with what's developed out there.
I walked through it the other day and we found a snake.
Oh, yeah. Audubon Society likes going out there.
Yeah, way more, way more grown up now.
Before that facility, the city of Lacey takes off part of that water and puts it into a recharge facility that you all, along with the city of Olympia, that's your Woodland Creek Facility. And it's, it recharges groundwater so you can go ahead and, for water rights mitigation. Pulled some numbers on this just recently, and it's about 100 million gallons a year it's put on here. So since it was built, I think the number is, remember, is 807 million gallons that's been put on. Just, so again, replenishing, you know, water rights mitigation, so.
Do we know if it's had a noticeable effect on the Woodland Creek like we thought it was going to?
Yes, the mounting effect that was the goal of the project's been successful, so.
Okay, that's good. So I know that's one, was one of the goals.
And then the future, thinking about the future, you mentioned, you mentioned about thinking about potable. So we are thinking to the future, saying, okay, well, what is the next step of treatment? And how can we demonstrate that water can be judged by its quality and not its history? And so when you think about it that way, let's demonstrate, you can make potable water. And so we're working with Lacey staff and other partner jurisdictions just to kind of explore what that looks like, how we can demonstrate it. This is a long-term thing. This is decades into the future. But, you know, we have to think long-term. Developing new water supplies takes decades. Any new water supply development would be done by the cities anyway, but we're forward-thinking and trying to be innovative and kind of research what this would look like for the future.
Do you remember Saturn Car Company?
Yeah.
They said that they're developing the manufacturing process and they cleaned the water so well that you could drink it.
Oh, really?
I don't know if you remember that.
I remember that part of it.
So some of the salespeople would go to the little tap and pour some into glass.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if they lived.
Well, it's interesting.
Saturn doesn't exist, so I'm not so sure.
Yeah, but it's interesting because the technology's been around a long time, right? Membranes, first reverse osmosis, the technology's there. It just...
It's more of a visceral issue, isn't it?
Exactly. It's a community. And so if we're able to prove it, then in the coming decades, we're talking like generation here, then it starts, when the time is right for each city to decide if that's what you want to do, then the community is ready to maybe take those steps. It's happening around the country in places that have a water crisis. We're fortunate not to have that here, but it's coming at some point. And so we're just kind of thinking to the future there. So now, thinking to the future, so if we have the public health space, the next step is public service and thinking about can the utility do more for the community in that community support? And that climate is part of that. See, it's working out. Thank you. So community support and connection fee rebates is subject to sewer conversions. And the city has taken on with Tomme Estates and other projects. So LOT is providing 50% discount on connection fees for that, as well as low-income housing support. And then the sanitation resources that we have for, you know, providing porta-potties and other things to support water quality. Wastewater epidemiology is a really cool one. You heard a lot about COVID testing in wastewater. That's really where things are going next, too, with testing for flu and RSV, supporting water quality projects overall. And when it comes to climate change, we're looking at that, too, and saying, we're tracking our carbon footprint. We're the largest power user in Thurston County, as I understand. And so we recognize we have a big carbon footprint. How can we keep, you know, playing our role in the community of what that goal is? And this is, these are recent numbers from our carbon footprint. You can see that 92% of our carbon footprint is electricity. So we can see that we're reducing things over time, and what's kind of hidden here is per capita, we've actually decreased our carbon footprint 32% since 2015. Remember, more people are moving to town, right? We have to pump more water. It's not gonna change. But as we take advantage of new technology, we can keep getting that down. But I think the 92% to me is a really positive sign because there's so much focus on trying to be electric. I mean, we're almost all-electric right now. And so as the grid goes greener over time, we'll be able to ride that wave for carbon neutral, and we can tackle the other 8% now and focus on that as we go towards that time. So we're doing some work there. That recent project that won the awards saved a lot of energy, 15% flatwide energy. We got a grant from PSE. This numbers, I just took the kilowatt-hours per year and turned them into these, there's an EPA website that's nice you can go to and just punch in the number and make it more tangible. It's about 3 million miles driven by gas-powered vehicles is the equivalent of that one project every year that we've been able to do. We're replacing a roof on a, for an upgrade. And it's a giant roof, and it's like, okay, well, let's see if we can put solar on there at the same time. You can get tax credits right now. You do both projects together. So now we're entering that solar space. That's about 5,600 electric vehicle miles every year from that project, and we're converting our fleet as we go. In Lacey, we have a project to upgrade the Martin Way Pump Station. That's over by Regal Cinemas over in that area, by Taco Bell. And that, as flow continues to increase in that area, then we need to upgrade the pumps and all that that goes there in the wet wells. So that project will be coming in the next three years or so. And then out at the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Plant, because that plant actually takes flow off the main line and turns it into reclaimed water, it wasn't originally built to be, you know, fully redundant because the plan was back when it was built was, we'll just shut it down and do the repairs and bypass the plant. But we've recognized over time, the city of Lacey really needs that water that's being produced, especially in the summer for water rights offsets. We've invested quite a bit of money into redundant systems, and our goal is to operate that all the time, not shut it down. So we've planned a series of improvements over the coming years to upgrade things without having to do major shutdowns. There are times when we have to shut it down for a few weeks and we coordinate with city staff. But there'd be some improvements coming up there, too. Whole series of infrastructure that I mentioned before, and we have a plan for the future, thinking out to 2050. We did that, that plan, and our plan is rather than build new treatment facilities, we're just going to be making sure our existing facilities are maximized. Because we're able to, we've proven to ourselves that we can actually make these improvements and get higher levels of treatment, and that's how we can build capacity. The higher level of treatment that we get, the more capacity we have. And we're actually in a process of selling off some properties that we had purchased 15 years ago that we don't need. So it's a greener approach just to expand what we have. We did need to buy a little bit of property from the port for kind of like adjusting case out in the 2040s timeframe. But that's our, that's our approach moving forward. So with all of those projects we need to do, it's somewhere in the order of 70 to 75% each biennial budget that we, that we have for capital projects and the debt we have to take on for it. This is the current budget. It's 73%. And how we're financed is monthly fees that come in from the rate payer base from all of the city's connections, as well as connection fees that when new homes are connected, that's what we use to build our new facilities. And so when you take the LOT rate and you add it to the city of Lacey rate, and this is, this, we do this every two years, so the data's in a bit older. We'll send out the new data. But the new data is gonna look very similar. You can see that the average, that we're below the average in all three cities. And so when you take the best treatment on Puget Sound and you have below-average rates, you know, that's where we want to be. That's where we want to say that we're providing good value for what we're doing. And I'll end on just a history of collaboration. You know, Lacey is LOT and a partner of LOT, but we collaborate on pre-treatment, water conservation, projects, all that. Rick and I talk quite a bit. Scott and I talk, and Troy talks to our finance manager. We just have a really great working relationship with staff, and I appreciate it. I appreciate that partnership, so. That's no worry. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what LOT is doing to prepare for the flooding that's starting to come into downtown and sea level rise.
Right. So we're in a collaborative effort with the city of Olympia and the port to have a sea level rise. To have a sea level rise collaborative, it's called. And look at, you know, near term projects and long term projects. The reason why that is more cost effective for us to invest there is that moving the treatment facility like ours. Back when the numbers were run, I think this was like seven years ago, it was like one point one billion. So I'll just say maybe it's a one and a half billion right now to move in. Who wants that treatment plan in their neighborhood, right? And so right now it's it's set. And the investments to be made in the short term are pretty manageable. Like we build new infrastructure like a substation, we set it up above the. The high level, I mean, of the watermark of the of the sea level rise, right? That's that's published. Um, and then we're working with the city uh, for their investments that they want to do with, you know, different projects, kind of like further outside the treatment plant. So we don't experience. Uh, like flooding, like coming into our plant, but it it will, if it does inundate the planet, it could be a big deal. So that's why we're part of these efforts.
And what Matt didn't say during his presentation. So I get to say is that he was the leader on this project that has won all these awards.
Yeah, that was when I was project manager before I got into this role, so it's nice to be able to still talk about it. Yeah.
So how much more capacity do we have like? For our population growth, where are we looking good? I mean, because there's obviously. I one of the reasons why we're so expensive is because we have to discharge Bud Inlet and Bud Inlet doesn't have a lot of flow. At the end of Bud Inlet, I mean, the only other place that touches Puget Sound, of course, is through Lacey. And is there any like this, are we now at the point of if we're gonna discharge more, we're gonna discharge into the ground? Or are we again just continue to discharge in Bud Inlet?
So the approach is to continue to discharge into Bud Inlet while continuing to divert flow to reclaimed water. And that reclaimed water would go to a variety of uses. It could go into groundwater recharge. It could go to irrigation. The approach to when we say discharge more. It's if for a given volume of water, we're did, we regulate it on total nitrogen. So if you, if you're allowed this much nitrogen in your discharge. Then whatever flow it takes, you know, to get there. So now more people move to town. But if we treat it down to half of that, you just bought capacity. Yes, it's more flow going out, but you actually are discharging. Less nitrogen. So that's where we get capacity. And that's what that planning effort showed is we can actually get our nitrogen lower. The flow, we're not actually driven by flow as much anymore. We're driven by the nitrogen that comes to us. Yeah. So as. So reclaimed water expansion happens in each of the cities and you all say, hey, we could expand here. Then as the flow develops and we can do it, then we'll go ahead and build the new facilities and continue to to expand those. And so like long term, talking about like, you know, thirty years out, you start making water. Cleaner and cleaner, right? Then the market kind of opens up more and more. So that's why we're looking.
What type of emergency management plans are in place if there is something like a cascade earthquake, you know, being so close to the water?
Right. So we do have emergency managed plans like documents, uh, basically how to respond to line breaks. Uh, how to respond, you know, earthquakes. We did assessment, structural assessment of our whole facility, understanding. You know, which buildings are on piles and, you know, how they're likely to fail. Um, so it's it's more like a series of different events and then we participate with the Thurston Emergency Management Group. Uh, and the Cascadia kind of scenarios that they run. We also, I would say, we also have agreements with each of this, each of the partner governments, like the city of Lacey, we have an agreement because we don't have. Like line crews to fix the lines that repair. We'll actually need to rely on like you all and others for your expert staff. Stocking spare parts, those kinds of things. It's like you kind of, it's like hit it from all angles, but we do have plans on the shelf on. Making sure we know how to respond depending on what breaks.
This isn't a question so much as a comment. A couple of months ago, we had a member of the public come and ask questions about their water bill. He said, I don't understand how my water bill is so high when my usage is so low. And so I think this presentation is important because even if water usage is relatively low. One of the things that people are paying for on their water bills is the capital investment. To, you know, keep our water really clean and keep our like emissions and our nitrogen discharge really low. So that we continue to preserve our natural environment. So it's not just, you know, how many gallons of water are you using per month, but. That investment in the future, having a nice place to live.
Right. You're exactly right. And the investment it takes, like I said, to take all of that sewage and make it clean. It's just a different type of investment than a groundwater that comes up that needs. Needs people watching to make sure it's safe, but it's a different approach than all the infrastructure. And I usually encourage people, it's like, come out to the plant, I'll show you yourself, you can see it for your own eyes. And what it takes, like what it takes, you know? And then, and then I like to show, that's why I like to show that it's actually, if you compare the rates versus the region. It's actually below the average. It is still, does feel very expensive to people, especially when they get maybe a bill every other month and it's two bills in one. So I do understand their position, uh, but it is what it takes to get it done, yeah.
So. Uh, waste, you know, solid is separated from liquid waste and and you know, we know what happens with that. What happens with solid?
Does it all go to Eastern Washington?
Solid material, all hundred percent goes to Eastern Washington. Uh, and the reason why it goes to Eastern Washington is it's dry over there. And so when you apply biosolids, you don't want to put them on a field and then rain comes and everything washes down because it's very controlled. This type of biosolids is called Class B, so it sits on fallow land for a year and then they can use it and and grow wheat. So and so the solids that you see is the solid matter that comes down from everything you put down the drain, including yourself. Um, but I would say the majority of it, maybe sixty percent is that bacteria that we grow that eats the nitrogen and. You know, consumes all that. That all breaks down. We basically grow that bacteria and then what we waste, we recycle that bacteria to do its job. What we waste becomes biosolids.
And they buy it from you guys?
They they pay, the farmers pay for it. We go out and bid the contract for hauling and disposal. And so that contract is, we still have to pay for that. So that farmer, I mean, that value they do buy into that, so it's less. But the hauling contract, the application, all the testing, all of that is, we do pay for that.
So I've heard about um. Places where they're using that solid waste, um, that solid product to create and generate energy. Is that something that that could happen here in the future?
Yeah, I I think there's a lot on the table. Biosolids is. Changing very fast because forever chemicals that you've heard about PFAS, all of that. So there's more awareness of, okay, what was that in biosolids? So it's like. So some people uh, take biosolids and make it so people can put it on their gardens. And now they're like, well, what's in the biosolids? Can I put on my garden? And the regulations and the science is catching up to all of this. Some places put it and burn it for energy. And then now you have, you know. You have an incineration process and does the community want that? So there's a lot of like balance that we face. You know, right now we have a fully sustainable program. The farmers like it, it's, you know. And so we haven't crossed that yet, but there are places that do use it for energy. There's just downsides to everything. And we're just tracking it closely to see where this all goes.
It's kind of different perspective here, just because I was interested. Um, I know in April two thousand twenty four, it takes about. Ten dollars, five to ten dollars per thousand gallons to desalinate ocean water. Um, in comparison, was it cost for, if if you know right offhand, I mean, you might not, I'm sure you might know. Um, what is it for reclaimed water or just basically treated water? Um. You know, could ten ten bucks every thousand gallons and you're talking millions, hundreds of millions of gallons, that's a lot of money. My point is trying to get a value for.
I don't want nothing more right now than to have the numbers because last week I sent an email asking for the exact numbers. Because I I want to know because it's a good number to have. And I was thinking about it because I was like, okay, well, this is how much it costs to create reclaimed water. And and we're talking about, well, what does it just take to go to that desalinate, you know, that that potable water step? And so when people see how much you invest already in something that's going out back to the saltwater environment that's clean and protected, but. Then what's that extra step that what it would take? Um, so I don't have that. I will definitely email you when I get it.
It seems like you guys are are looking at it at a thirty thousand foot, you know, view. You know, and keeping your eye on it and seeing. When does it make sense?
Right. I, it's getting closer. And what is driving other communities that are running out of water? Is that those those lines start to cross in our area. We're just not there yet. It's it's out there. But we're just not there. And so we need to set ours, in my opinion, we need to set ourselves up with the community, you know, to just know that that time will come. Um, as, but there's more and more technology advancements, like reverse osmosis has been the thing that has gotten like with membranes for D sal. But now there's more processes that are being developed that don't take that kind of energy. It's very energy intensive for reverse osmosis. If we just took our reclaimed water, for example, that we produce two million gallons a day. I think we're talking about on the orders of hundreds of millions of dollars to make that potable. Like it, it's actually just so, it's, it's not easy. But there's, but people want to solve this, right? And they want to apply technology. So it's coming. It's coming. Yeah.
And as our population grows.
That's the thing. So.
Our water rights are going to shrink in relation to our population and then reclaimed water may be the way that we close that gap in fifty years.
Exactly. And I think it, to me, it's it's. Designer water alcohol, right? Design it for the end use. Going on an irrigation for a for a golf course, it doesn't need to be. Made to that. So let's use reclaimed water in those situations. But there's other situations where it needs to be at a higher level, right? So. We can just unlock that full spectrum and then design the water for the end use.
Plus it'll be continued to be filtered as it goes through the the ground.
Right.
Soil.
Exactly.
Thank you. We'll see you next year. Thanks for that. Awesome. Next up, um, is. Our continuation of our neighborhood commercial discussion. So as you know, the last time we discussed this. Uh, we had a couple more questions, alright? Um, we had some questions about the the heights of of. The minimum heights within neighborhood commercial and had some other questions that we were hoping to get answered. So. I know the staff did a little some more research and actually went out and took some pictures and so uh. I'll turn it over to Ryan and 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 um, staff to uh, continue this discussion.
Yeah, uh, great. Thanks for setting that up so well. I'm actually just gonna turn it over to Hans to get started on the presentation as soon as he's able to bring that up. But just as a reminder, we're talking about two specific issues. One, the ground floor height for commercial uses and essentially mixed use buildings. And then second, the affordable housing component um, or requirement as recommended by the planning commission. What we'll do is we'll go through each section. We've got some materials to present, give Hans a chance to present. And then as we go through each topic, we'll allow you to have some conversation and our goal is to. Um, have consensus from the council that we're we're able to then fold into the final ordinance that's gonna go in front of you. Uh, when this is adopted, hopefully in the next month or so. So with that. It's like we're close to.
There we go. Yeah, so the brief introduction. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, we are gonna dive right into the last two questions that we really have remaining on this topic. Um, so there's not a whole lot of introduction before that, but the first topic that we were gonna cover tonight. That we're coming back around to is ground floor commercial heights. And this is a quick graphic just to show kind of generally the space of a building that we're talking about. We're gonna get more into detail on this in a little bit here. Um, but it's really that space between the the true ceiling and then either the drop ceiling or. Uh, the area that includes things like your HVAC, your sprinklers, your any sound dampening, any lighting, any other uh. Utilities or materials that take occupy that space is really what we're talking about here. This right here, so throughout this process, we've gone out to the community quite a few times to ask them. Uh, a range of different questions uh, as it relates to neighbor commercial districts. Uh, one of the questions that we asked pretty early on. Uh, was what are some of the uses or types of services that you currently travel outside the city of Lacey? Uh, to receive, gather, visit, what have you? Um, and this is a chart that kind of just breaks down all of those different types of uses. Based on, uh, and these are all commercially uses, I should say, based on their general needs for ground floor minimum height requirements. Uh, and what we see is actually that over seventy seven point three percent of those types of uses that were identified by the community. That they're currently leaving Lacey to. Uh, visit are equal to that fifteen or greater than uh, for just minimum needs to be a successful business and occupy in that space. And I think that includes things like grocery stores, uh, department and mall sto- um, type stores, restaurants. Uh, entertainment, gym, bakery. And then in the gray area, we have things that do well within that twelve to fifteen height range. Uh, so that might include things like specialty stores, retail, clothing, thrift shops. Uh, your salons, your barbers, bookshops, things like that. So that's kind of in that other zone there. We also have medical, which is orange. Didn't get a good reading on, that's a pretty variable one, so I didn't really want to touch that, but that was something that came up. And then we'll call out department sto- stores and malls and then bakery and cafe, which are highlighted here. So the follow up question that we did ask to this was. Uh, so different than what you're leaving Lacey. What do you currently want to see within these neighborhood commercial districts? So slightly different question. Uh, but again, what we're seeing is that seventy six point seven percent of the types of uses that are identified. That folks are looking for that are specifically in these neighborhood commercial districts. Uh, really do well or require that minimum of fifteen feet of ground floor commercial height to really be successful as a business. Um, and the reason I called out the bakery and cafes and the department stores and malls. Is that the department store and mall actually drops pretty far down that list as far as. How many people are identifying it within these neighborhood commercial districts? So that's actually just kind of a positive reinforcement that people really do understand the. Value and kind of role of these smaller neighborhood commercial districts versus other commercial districts. When we're asking these questions that they are really tracking with us and what we're information we're trying to gather and we're receiving it back. Um, one of the other things at our last meeting that we were uh, asked to go do is go look at some of our example districts. Uh, so throughout this process, we've also asked the community, what are example districts? You would like to see our neighborhood commercial districts modeled after? Uh, one of the ones that came up quite frequently is the Proctor district. Um, so we have a couple photos from our visit there. Uh, so we have Vanessa actually on the far left goat there and Ryan in the yellow. Um. I won't have them stand up. As as kind of comparisons to what we're talking about here. So on the far left hand side, we have. Uh, this is actually a frame shop, but that kind of falls into that professional services retail kind of category. Uh, this was a twelve feet ground floor uh, commercial height. And then actually, you can kind of see where that three foot drop is. And that's actually encompassing things like the ventilation, the sprinklers, other things. And that actual section is sectioned off to an area where customers typically don't stand. It's behind the counter. So there are locations where those needs exist, but typically they're at a height at that point that they're not really. Desirable to be in when you're going to these businesses. So you typically see them behind counters or in kind of more employee spaces. Um, the photo next to it is a gift shop, gifter art shop combination. That's also in that twelve. Uh, foot range there. And then moving across, the next one we actually found was a tap house. It's actually in the process of being built. We actually had the opportunity to talk to the uh, construction folks outside the Atlanta, say a measuring tape, which was pretty helpful. We were walking around with a avalanche snow probe for a while. Yeah, planning in action. Um, but this one was sixteen feet. And again, that's transitioning from more to kind of those general commercial to when you're having a restaurant, a food space. You need a lot more of those HVAC kind of kitchen style supplies that occupy a lot of that headspace. Uh, so that's where we're seeing that transition there. And then this is also a restaurant. This is where we stop for lunch. But again. Uh, this one actually exceeded the fifteen foot mark. Uh, that ceiling that you see, there's actually a drop ceiling. Um, but that was already well above that fifteen mark. So I don't actually know how tall that one was. But again, above that fifteen foot uh. Range that we're talking about. Uh, also in the Proctor district, uh, this is Metropolitan Market, uh, as we've all probably heard many a time. Grocery stores was a a hot topic and popular item uh, within the outreach that we did. So this is an example of what. A grocery store looks like on that smaller side that would fit within some of our neighborhood commercial districts. I believe this is around twenty nine uh, thousand square feet of space, just to give you kind of an idea of what we're talking about. And this is much taller than that fifteen feet ground floor commercial, I will say that most grocery stores in that instance would be purpose built. So they don't necessarily um need this requirement as much as some of the other uses, um, if one were to go in that. Structure would be built for that use versus some of these other, we're really just trying to make sure that they're as adaptable as possible.
The fruit and vegetable standout on Timor?
No, that's.
No, that's in Tacoma.
Oh, okay, what is the height of that?
We weren't, that was well beyond our. It is far exceeded the fifteen, um, I would say, yeah.
I'm not sure I could fall and hit that ceiling.
But it's much taller than the the range that we're talking about, and we're talking about minimums here, so. Um, nothing that we're having our code would preclude that from happening, we're just talking about the other end of that range of what's that minimum height that we really should be targeting. Um, one of the other locations that we did stop at was Point Ruston, this was another destination that was identified in the feedback. I will note that really the types of uses that exist in Point Ruston really are not a great fit for what we're targeting within these neighborhood commercial districts. That said, we did, we were in Tacoma, so we did take a stop there, we did take a look at those, all of these heights are well above actually eighteen feet. Um, you can see Ryan again there with the pole, trying to figure out what the height is.
All the all produces.
Ground floor.
In Ruston would be eligible and our neighborhood commercial.
They would, for sure, they're just not necessarily the target scale that we are looking for specifically within these districts, they definitely could come in. Uh, we're just not trying to write code specific to that, if that makes sense, we have our larger.
I mean, we'd love to have like area like Ruston.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not at all saying that that's not something great, but it's just for neighbor commercial districts, that's not the scale of development that we're really envisioning here. Um, so we did pick up those, they were eighteen plus feet, but again, that's at the other end of the spectrum. One of the other locations that we stopped at uh was in DuPont, uh, it's actually the Mince Mercantile, this one was another one a little bit closer to home. Uh, that was frequently referenced uh in the outreach that we did as well, uh, this is a combination of uh groceries, small grocery store and cafe. And then actually has commercial offices above, I think Ryan's uh losing enthusiasm over.
He's had a long day at this point.
Ryan bikes uphill.
After biking out of Point Rust.
But uh again, size comparison here, uh, this one again is the ground floor commercial of this site is uh above that fifteen. Uh, minimum ground floor height that we've been talking about, uh, and this one again, kind of back behind the counter, you see that five foot drop. Truly use encompass a lot of those uh ceiling equipment supplies that we've been talking about that are really needed there. Um, and then getting even closer to home over on Sixth Avenue, uh, so this is the Sixth Avenue apartments. Uh, on the left hand side, I think that's actually pretty close to when it was built around two thousand and six. I believe, and then it's been remodeled a bit since then, um, and it is built at fifteen feet ground floor height. And within this uh ground floor strip in here, we actually have a combination of uses, so we have a gym, we have a restaurant. Uh, we have live workspaces, uh, and really it's just that commercial with residential above. Uh, but all of these are possible uh because of that fifteen uh foot minimum that this building currently has. Uh, and those uses have changed since it was currently built and they've been adjusted and there's been a lot of changes to that, but. All the the businesses that have been able to go in and occupy these places, that's only possible in a lot of instances because of that ceiling height. That accommodates those types of uses. Um, moving actually just uh. Where are we, west of us uh into Olympia, uh, this is actually the old Roxy radio stations. Um, I don't know if any of you are familiar with this one, um, there's a drop ceiling in there, it's it's, this is kind of an older use, they've since moved out of there. But Olympia does have a fifteen foot ground floor uh commercial requirement for their heights. Um, with the drop ceiling, uh, one of my good friends has actually just moved their restaurant in here, so he sent over some before and after photos. Uh, so this is interior, what that looks like with that drop ceiling, you can start to see through there a little bit, there's some of that ventilation. HVAC, all that other materials, and then the after, what they've been able to convert it to because it has that fifteen foot height. Uh, it's possible, so that's another example of different uses being able to occupy the same space, provided it's built to accommodate that. If that was a lower ceiling height, that type of use wouldn't be possible at that location, just it would be cost prohibitive.
That's good too.
So, there's that as well. Um, yeah, so that's really ground floor, the work that we've done since our last meeting. Um, some of the information that I've collected and found, this is again, kind of a summary slide that was presented at the last meeting. Um, it's a breakdown of our existing code, which really is, doesn't speak to ground floor heights for commercial uses specifically. Um, there's the planning commission recommendation, which was for commercial and live workspaces, uh fifteen uh foot minimums. And then there's a few of the alternatives that we discussed and that are also out there. Um, so alternative two in this uh example here is minimum height requirement of fifteen feet. For the first fifteen thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space, and then after that, that restriction, provided you meet that initial requirement would go away. For uh the remainder of any commercial uses that would go on site, so as long as that initial is met. Then beyond that, you could be down to twelve feet or whatever makes sense depending on the use.
Can you just kind of like illustrate how what that would look like, like, okay, so fifteen thousand, the first fifteen thousand. And and then any additional square footage is also in that same space, or is it in the next space, how do, I don't.
So within these districts, these commercial, neighbor commercial districts, uh, just total quantity of commercial space is all we're talking about. Uh, so the first fifteen thousand total quantity commercial ground floor space would be required to be at that fifteen foot minimum ground floor height. Uh, any additional commercial space.
Within this, in the next.
Whether it's in the street building or another building next door, as long as it's within that same.
Has to be a fif- uh, just fifteen.
At least. So, um, thank you for putting this in perspective, so you went out to these districts. Um, what is your key, what's your takeaway, like, is your takeaway that we should keep everything at fifteen thousand, at fifteen?
So we, I would say that we we did find a lot of uh uses that were both in that twelve to fifteen range for sure. Uh, from the community's perspective, there was the types of uses that we were told that they wanna see within these districts. Seventy five plus percent of them do represent that fifteen foot minimum to really be successful. Um, so I think that some form of a requirement uh needs to exist within these districts to require some amount of. Uh, ground floor commercial that's at a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet, and really the reason behind this is that typically how the process works. Is that these buildings are built kind of as shelves, and then different commercial uses come in after the fact and occupy them. So to ensure that there's at least adequate space to accommodate a restaurant if one were to come in in the future or a grocery store, some other example use. Uh, fifteen feet is really that needed minimum, uh, and that's not to say that you can go above that, um. But it's kind of finding out, figuring out what amount uh is really kind of the right fit for these districts.
So, so apartment complex like Serenity, which has a live work units, wouldn't be allowed under this?
So it would, uh, so we have different, so that type of use, I should say, would be permitted, provided that. They can accomplish a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. So we have already other requirements within our code that requires a minimum amount of commercial space before ground floor residential can take place.
But they don't, so that's where.
So.
My big thing is I've lived in two live work units, neither of them had fifteen feet, so we're just preventing that that use completely.
So the example on Sixth Street has live work units and they are fifteen feet.
But I know, but the my lived example, which works amazing, would not be allowed, and so we prevent that from happening.
Well, no, you're, that's still allowed, well, live work is still allowed.
But they're not, what I'm saying is they're not, they're twelve feet.
Yeah, but.
All the ones I've lived in are twelve feet.
Build the same thing and just give it fifteen foot ceilings.
They could build the same thing if there was a fifteen.
Well, that's the, that's the question. That's the question that we need.
Also in there.
That's the question that we need to have here, and and in my mind, what we're balancing, right, is we we want. And the public wants these types of amenities. We have to balance that versus the additional cost it is to build from twelve to fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Right, and so the last thing we wanna do is put in a requirement and it just sits empty because it's too expensive for people.
And that's my big worry is the units that I've lived in that are twelve feet get filled up immediately. And it's more so smaller businesses, which I think is more so the future direction of a lot of, a lot of people's work. And neither unit had fifteen thousand square feet of other commercial space, and neither of them had fifteen feet. But they were all filled all the time, and then when they weren't rented, they were immediately rented, it's just turnover is nonstop.
We need to remember that.
The intent of this district is to be a commercial district, right, it is not to be a multifamily district, it's not necessarily even to be a live work district. It's to be, it's provide those commercial services that the feedback provided that, you know, prioritize those things. So we need to keep that in mind, and we did see when we were out in the field, several examples of live work at fifteen feet, including DuPont, I don't know if you, if we have.
Not in the presentation, but we do.
So, you know, it exists and it's been successfully leased out, the good thing about that fifteen foot um is that it allows for maximum flexibility. So if a live work unit is no longer viable, then, you know, a restaurant can come in. If at twelve feet, the live work unit becomes no longer viable, then is a restaurant gonna come and take that place, no. Um, a a perfect example is down Sixth Avenue, right, where, you know, we've got that space on the end of the building that at some point may become more viable for commercial. At that point, that is now leasable space for a variety of different uses, so, so keep that in.
So the live work thing can exist, the townhomes can exist, so long as they're anchored by a fifteen, minimum fifteen thousand square foot, fifteen foot high.
That's option two.
That's option two, okay.
In that description, yeah, that's option two, really quickly, option number three, all building corner and end vertical units must have a minimum of fifteen feet.
Yeah.
So those are kind of the three, after we got the feedback from you guys from our last work session. Uh, and kind of combine that with all the feedback that we've received, those are kind of the three options that seem to make the most sense. Uh, and really what we're hoping to get from you is direction on which one of these seems to make the most sense that we should carry forward within the code.
Do you have a recommendation?
So my uh recommendation for for us would be, I think, number two. I think number one is basically saying that everything needs to be fifteen feet, when we were out in the field and we showed you in the slides, there is a variety of different spaces that are. Um, successful at twelve, there's a variety of different spaces that are successful at fif- fifteen, number two gives us that variety. Um, and so it it kind of goes from the most restrictive to the least restrictive, number three is only those that are commercial or end units need to be fifteen feet. That seems maybe just a little too flexible and.
Although, I would like to see the all corner and ends should be fifteen feet regardless. Right, cause you could, you could do, you could do those two, right, you could say minimum in all corner and.
It's more of a prime location to.
Well, yeah, cause you're you're sort of setting.
Definitely the reason behind that is that those are the restaurants, so that we're kind of.
Right. You might as well have the best locations, be the most dynamic and, you know, so you could combine the two.
You could, yeah, we absolutely could.
So my my concern is like every location is different animal, right, it's like may not work in one area of the city, but might work in another area. You know, it's it's kind of like the drive it, the drive throughs, you know, with the buildings off Young Highway. They sat empty for twenty years until we allowed drive throughs and. And this, I think, in some areas of the city is that particular case, if we require fifteen thousand feet, they're gonna sit empty for forever. You know what I mean, or for another twenty years, and then are we really doing our job, you know, um, it's market driven. So we need to be flexible with that.
That's the point I'm trying to make is that the reason why we don't have more live units, uh, because people just don't know about them. And I think if more people knew about these type of units that I've actually lived in, people would develop them way more. So I'm just so hesitant to be restrictive on the type of units.
If I can interject to you, it there is a balance between market driven and what the community vision and the expectations for neighborhoods to have. And their neighborhood commercial districts, and and so there's, you gotta find that balance, so it's not one hundred percent one way and maybe not the other. And and working at the liver units, going back to the Sixth Avenue example, what, that was a time where we said every ground floor retail hat or ground floor space had to have. Fifty percent retailer office, and we went back and flexed that up, but we wanted to make sure to add uh opportunity for flexibility for multiple uses. That was our first venture into kind of the four base code concept. With when we were eased the restriction because it was built to a fifteen foot ceiling height, they can allow ground floor residential, the first two units were occupied where the end residential. The work, that was, that would work the fifteen foot ceiling and it still worked with everything else, and then we had the cafe come in and the and also they put the fitness center down there. So there was ways where it was actually the first use to go in was the live work unit versus the commercial, it just took some time for the commercial to come along. But this, this fifteen foot, as as I think it uh we heard, is it does provide a lot of flexibility long term. And doesn't mean that that use stays a live work unit or it stays a commercial, it's going to evolve over time and and have that flexibility.
The other thing that I think would help visually is if we go take a look back at um these districts. And can you give us an idea of what fifteen thousand square, was it, we're talking about fifteen thousand square feet? What that looks like and within the con, right, I mean.
Fifteen thousand square foot is a lot.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, that's why.
Screw building is a thirty thousand square foot building, you're talking about half of that building, that's big.
But in in conjunction of the whole district, it might not be as much, I mean, I.
There's not, there's not fifteen thousand at all, Ryan, combined.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, it's like, say we implement this new standard. What is it actually gonna look like on the ground? I don't know.
Have we got feedback for what developers are wanting?
Big shoes building, yeah.
I, I feel like we're getting really, really deep into the weeds on. We have two very solid recommenda- three very solid recommendations for staff, one of which was supported by the planning commission. And another that they went and did a ride, ride adventure to get a lot of evidence before they made the recommendation for, so. I'm supportive of recommendation alternative number two, because I feel like it sort of strikes a balance between the concerns we raised last time we talked about this. And what we heard from the community that they want to see, and it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the option of having live workspaces. It would just be in larger buildings, but again, this isn't the whole city, this is just the neighborhood commercial zones, which is what? Three, four that we have that are left yet undeveloped?
Eight.
Eight.
How much of that eight already has close to fifteen thousand square feet or fifteen height, like I, like I'm still having a hard time.
That's where every, every location's a little bit different, and there may be one that can really accommodate fifteen thousand square feet, that's up in the northeast area. Others are going to have different um, different configurations and 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 size. And that mainly because it's not the district size, it's the parcel size within the district and um. And then the fifteen feet is scalable, but you wanna try to get those type of neighbor commercial uses that provide those services close to. Houses and and walkable distances, that's kind of the concept behind this as well, and that's what kind of we heard from the community.
I mean, I understand that, but if, say, within this, if, is there only one district that can actually accommodate all fifteen thousand square feet? Or I mean, if the rest of the districts ain't even accommodate fifteen thousand square feet, then we're saying the whole district has to be.
So there's definitely more than the one on Forty First and Marvin that can accommodate that much, that one, I think. Yeah, six point something acres, so by comparison, it can fit.
The biggest.
Yeah.
So that leaves me a question, so is it, is on that six point one acres, only one structure of fifteen thousand square feet and fifteen feet? Or each building has to have.
Give it a.
Utilative amount.
Utilative amount, so however you.
However you wanna.
Yeah, however they want to.
Okay, so they, if if, and they have to lead out with that?
Yeah, so I think in the draft code, it does say that to come first has to be the the commercial, right?
Yeah, so that was another thing that we were encountering is that when we're not requiring that as far as phasing, that we see those residential uses built. And then the commercial component, which these are commercial districts, doesn't come or doesn't happen or is pushed to phase two, phase three. Uh, so we do have language within the draft proposal that does require the commercial component to be the first part of phase one. Of any development that were to take place on site.
Then the rest of that six acres could be broken up, it could be townhomes, it could be whatever.
That's actually the second half of this conversation, but I did wanna get guidance on this one first.
I I I think all building corners and end units should have fifteen, that just makes a lot of sense.
I would agree with that.
Right?
It's the most flexibility.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, the fifteen thousand is like, I mean, I'm okay with maybe looking, requiring fifteen thousand too. But I'm saying at very least, all building corners and commercial.
Yeah.
Andy, yeah, do we have anybody here that came specifically for this, the gen item in the audience?
Oh, did you?
Oh, did you? Did you have some input on this?
Sure, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to speak. Um. We, so I represent the owner of the site that's located on the corner of Willamette and Thirty First.
Yeah.
And our neighborhood commercial district. Site is about two acres. And to accommodate fifteen thousand square feet of pure commercial, it takes up the whole two acres. Uh, and so that, that's a concern for us. We've spoken to a lot of different. Uh, retail tenants or possible tenants over the last few years that have been on the site and. There has been zero interest in coming to the site, um, for retail purposes. And so we're really interested in seeing what flexibility we can have for things like live work units that would allow us to develop the site. Now and not wait, you know, ten or fifteen years for it to be developed.
I mean, I really, I, that's a valid concern, right?
The only reason we don't have more is because people don't know they exist. And while they do, they think.
I think the, the question again, is it adding those three extra feet make it cost prohibitive?
Fifteen thousand.
It definitely adds the cost. I don't know that it would prevent it from going forward. It's still driven by the uses. If we can find a use. That can occupy that space and requires the fifteen feet, they're willing to pay their rent, then we could go forward with that. But.
But your concern has more to do with, can I find that much? Commercial to begin with.
Correct. And because of, given the constraints of the size of our site. If commercial has to lead out, you know, finding fifteen thousand square feet of commercial.
Well, see, maybe we should have a percentage of, of lot size as compared to what building size you have there.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Sure.
You don't have to build fifteen thousand square feet. It's just that fifteen thousand square feet is the threshold where we start to talk about. Ground floor residential uses being permitted in the zone. So that's, so just keep that in mind. And then the other thing that I wanna kind of point out is that the new codes that we have proposed and have been recommended out of the planning commission. Actually add a lot of flexibility to the commercial neighborhood zone that, oh, it isn't just solely focused on commercial uses anymore. We are allowing that live work in that space and you can count that square footage towards that. Uh, fifteen thousand square feet, or maybe you only can fit ten thousand on the property. That's also fine. Based on looking at it through the lens of this height requirement, however, that first ten thousand square feet. Would have to have that ground floor height based on the planning commission recommendation. Based on the alternative, that would be variable. So if it was corner units, maybe it would be the two units on the end of the live work that would be that tall. And the units in the middle would be at twelve, for example, if we looked at alternative three.
This is coming from the business perspective, having multiple businesses and doing leases. Fifteen thou- or fifteen feet, if it's adding on cost, generally those spaces are gonna be larger, meaning they're gonna be more expensive for a tenant. The reason why I'm kind of fighting so hard for this is that the smaller height requirement for, let's say it's the middle units. Is generally gonna be a smaller space, which a more private, you know, independent person can start up a business. The fifteen feet, they're generally probably gonna want a larger space that I think is more expensive.
I think a, a, a good point was made here where. It's really difficult to say fifteen thousand square feet of entire district. When one property owner is trying to do something, right? And now has to meet the entire district's. Um, requirements in order to do it. And so it, it, it may make more sense where we are actually talking about, um. All corner and end units, you know, have fifteen feet and a percentage of the overall, um. Parcel has to be something, right? Cause now you're looking at per, you're not, uh. You're not penalizing someone because they have a smaller parcel within the lar- within the larger neighborhood commercial district. It's like, cause in this case now all, you know, in this, this case, it'd be very hard to, to, to be. Have some more flexibility there.
Or at least create a chance for variance, you know, or something. Some, some, something not just a, a, this is the line in the sand.
Is it possible this whole thing can be scaled by acreage?
Oh yeah, I mean, anything's possible. Anything's possible, but yeah, we could definitely look at.
On the larger side of parcels, what we got? The six, is that basis? On the smaller side?
So long as like one.
So corner units on smaller parcels.
So how can we scale?
I mean, that makes.
Thousand, right? And you, one and six, you could do, you know. You know, for six, it could be the fifteen and for the one, it could be the.
The corners.
And then somewhere in between for the rest and then everybody wins, right?
Doesn't that make more?
But then we don't open the floodgates either, right? And, and not get what we want twenty, forty, fifty years down the road.
We're making sure everything has something we're looking for, but we're allow a little more flexibility to meet the market. I think that makes more sense if we can, if we can scale it that way.
Yep, I think that's feasible.
So what we can do is we can come up with a appropriate parcel size where alternative two would apply. And then appropriate parcel size where.
That feel good, guys? You okay with that? Okay.
Feels better.
There's the flexibility to have to primarily try to focus on commerce, but also allow residential flexibility, which I think is why his point is. The height.
Perfect transition.
Transition.
So the other topic, uh, that we're bringing in front of you guys tonight, uh, has to do with, uh. Housing, but more specifically ownership and affordability. So currently as the code that is currently adopted today is written. Uh, residential uses are only permitted above ground floor commercial. So there's no ground floor residential currently permitted within these districts. Primarily because these are commercial districts first and foremost. That said, um. We've received feedback throughout this process that the community is open to ground floor residential. Uh, as an additional use or an added use to these districts. Um. And then following up on those discussions, actually at our January ninth work session with the council. The idea of affordability, uh, within these newly permitted or potentially permitted. Residential uses on the ground floor, uh, we should explore that was basically put out, uh, to us as staff. So we took that to the planning commission and within the draft that the planning commission put forward, uh. There are ground floor affordability requirements for residential units. Um, I will note that since that came so late in the process, the only time we really ever had the opportunity to get community feedback. On that as an idea and a concept within these districts was at the public hearing. Uh, because it was really a late addition concept and idea. Um. The public hearing comments were attached to the last couple, uh, worksheets. I don't know if you guys. Had the opportunity to review all of those. Uh, there's, there's a pretty good range of feedback that was in there.
Yes.
Um, some of the common themes that we did receive within those, that feedback, um. Recognize that, uh. Homeownership and affordability, depending on how you discuss it in both contexts, is incredibly important. And recognize that it's a citywide con- uh, concept that, you know, these. Districts can play a part in, but it really is not unique or special to these districts as far as the challenges that we're facing. Um, some of the other comments that, uh, we heard is that these are the smallest. Type of commercial district that we have within our communities. We have a range of different scales and intensities of commercial uses within our, uh, city. These re- represent kind of the smallest end of that spectrum. Um. When talking about ground floor, uh, residential uses, townhomes were one of the things that was actually identified. Uh, within those comments as kind of the prefer- preferred version of residential use. That really kind of occupies that transition space between more intensive commercial areas and more residential neighborhoods. Um, and then also the multifamily tax exemption, um, was also brought up within those comments. Um, so those are all just kind of a summary of the feedback that we received. It is limited compared to the overall outreach that we did. Um, but as far as the feedback that we did receive specific to homeownership and affordability, that's kind of the general themes that. Uh, were covered in those topics. Um. Coming around to the multifamily tax exemption, which I referenced on the previous slide. Uh, that is a code that we currently have within the city. That said, it only applies to the woodland district as it's currently written today. Uh, within our affordable housing strategy, we actually identify that, uh, as something, as one of our action items that we do want to address in the future. Uh, and expand that to other districts within our community. Currently it only applies to one, neighbor commercial districts is not it. So. Those opportunities and benefits are not possible as things are currently written within neighbor commercial districts. Um. To give you a little bit more information on what is within the multifamily tax exemption, essentially it provides tax exemptions. On a twelve year basis, when a minimum of twelve percent of the housing units constructed on a project are affordable. Or there's also an eight year option, uh, which does not carry an affordability requirement. So it's broken out into two different sections. So far, I believe primarily with, well, only in the woodland districts. Primarily, we only see the eight year exemption taking place so far. Um, so that twelve year exemption is out there. We do have code language written for it. It just doesn't currently apply to neighbor commercial districts. So that's something to keep in mind. And then the other topic, uh, that was kind of identified in those comments as townhomes. And kind of pivoting a little bit from still on the affordability side, but that pathway to homeownership. Uh, multifamily doesn't really provide pathways to homeownership. Townhouses, on the other hand, are kind of do occupy that space of more entry level housing. That do provide pathways to homeownership. And they were identified as a good. Transition type of residential use between commercial and residential areas. Uh, so we have two different actual chapters dedicated to town home, house development. And really the common themes and kind of intent behind those, that it encourages infill. Uh, promotes attractive, safe and functional design, uh, that addresses the needs of future residents while integrating into the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, minimizes impacts between multifamily developments and established single family areas. And it provides for visual linkage between the proposed development and existing neighborhoods. So that's kind of the intent behind. Townhomes and why that's a section within our code that's also available if we wanna borrow from that or. Think about incorporating that within these neighbor commercial districts. Um, and now this slide should look again kind of familiar. So affordable housing options. Currently, it's not addressed within our neighbor commercial districts. Primarily because ground floor residential isn't allowed currently within our districts the way it's written. Uh, so assuming that we do wanna move forward with options for ground floor residential uses. And we do wanna ensure that there's some level of homeownership or affordability that's attached to those. Uh, we've identified four different potential options as far as how we could accomplish that. Uh, the top one is the, uh, planning commission recommendation that we discussed at our last meeting. Uh, had to do with ground floor residential units, uh, must meet affordability requirements. Um, which is, uh, defined as six percent of the median household income. So that's the planning commission recommendation. Uh, based on the feedback they received at our last workshop, work session, that we came up with a couple of alternatives, um. One, uh, number two on this list, it has to do with updating the multifamily tax exemption chapter to include additional districts. One of those districts could potentially be favorite commercial districts. Uh, gen- as a general statement, I think it is worth looking at that chapter again and looking at ways to expand it. Um. Option number three, apparently that's a two there, but ignore that. Um, ground floor residential, uh, is permitted in the form of townhomes. So only permitting ground floor residential when it is in the form of a townhouse. So that's ensuring that there is that residential use, but it takes the form of something that has a pathway to homeownership. And provides kind of a transition zone between more traditional neighborhood style developments and the commercial character of these districts. Um. Or providing some kind of, uh. Number four here, my numbering system is messed up, so apologies for that. Uh, twenty percent of affordable units required in neighbor commercial districts, uh. With ground floor residential uses are required to be affordable. And that's a little bit wordy, but essentially what that is, is bringing it in alignment with the requirements of the neighborhood. Uh, multifamily tax exemption, uh, which requires a twenty percent minimum for affordability. In order to qualify for that twelve year tax exemption. So those are some different options. Um, and you don't have to choose any of them or one specifically. You can kind of combine them and pick and choose. It's kind of à la carte. So, but those are the ideas that we came up with, uh, that kind of meet the intent of the feedback. Uh, well, and the guidance that we received from the planning commission and you guys at our previous meetings.
What is our AMI? One oh three? It's one oh three.
So if.
Her ball question.
You know, um. This is a tough one, um. Obviously, we want more affordable housing. I get that. Um. I don't know if the comments we received on this is. Alliance with the, the thinking of the, most of the general public. They, there are obviously a lot of comments were specific about one neighborhood commercial zone. And they were absolutely against having multifamily going there. Almost everyone was, um. So on one hand, I can understand where they're coming from. This is a commercial distribution, somewhat state commercial. Um, townhomes, I think, is a little bit diff- little bit different, you know, I think it's sort of. Blends in along with, uh, live work. I think those fit really well in, into what we're doing. Um. But going straight. Multifamily. And then, uh, with a lower income, actually a lot, a lot of people were, I thought a lot of these comments were somewhat ignorant to tell you the truth. And I mean, that's a totally different, different animal, um, but, uh, you know, I, I. Do understand we need to be flexible, but, um, we're talking about a specific district that's already commercial. So I'm, I'm sort of, sort of struggling with this one a little bit. Where's, what's, what, what, what would be your recommendation on this?
Yeah, so I will say that speaking to those comments. Residential multifamily is actually already in allowed use within these districts, provided it's above ground floor commercials. So a lot of those comments were raising concerns, but they were raising concerns about uses that are already committed. Um, really what we needed to come through the feedback and look for is comments that were specific to ground floor residential. We kind of figure out what feedback that was. Um. Within these, uh, examples or options, uh, that we have here. Requiring, uh, a minimum affordability, um, requirement within these districts. Uh, without the availability of the multifamily tax exemption.
Yeah.
I think is a lift that is going to prove difficult, uh, for development within these districts. So we wanna find that balance. I think one of the staff's recommendations is definitely that we should, and not part of this process, but part of the comprehensive update that we're moving into. Look at our multifamily tax exemption chapter and look at ways to better apply that to more districts. So I think that that's definitely an opportunity that's available in the near term for us to, from a city approach. Uh, help move that needle on affordability and homeownership within the community. So one of the recommendations, I think, is definitely. The first alternative to.
The first two, yeah.
Um, and so that's something that's coming up in the near future. Uh. The second alternative to, I think, is a. Type of housing that does seem to blend those two kind of more single family to multifamily transition.
Yes.
Um, so, and the language is a little bit funky here, but I think. When we're allowing ground floor residential, requiring it to be in the form of townhouses. Um, is a great way to provide kind of an additional buffer between the more intensive center of these districts and the. Neighborhoods that are surrounding them. That doesn't permit or prohibit, I should say, multifamily from taking place in these districts. It just moves multifamily to where it currently is permitted above ground floor commercial. So as a transition use, but still adding and kind of expanding the flexibility of these districts. Allowing more types of uses and increasing our overall housing stock. That might be a good option. Um, there is some language in there that we'd wanna change, specific to garages and how they interfere with pace with the street with these districts. So each one of these is a second that we kind of start pulling from other chapters. Everything is really related to everything. So it does have this cascading effect of now we gotta look at this section to make sure that it's really aligned with this intent. So there is some additional language there that we'd wanna get right. Um, and then either as part of this process or looking forward into the future, uh, requiring that twenty percent affordable units. Um, that makes sense in tandem with whenever that multifamily exemption, uh, comes into place. Um, tax exemption, I should say, in our mind. So. Kind of what I was talking about earlier, we don't have to pick or choose just one of these. We can definitely kind of use all of these as. Kind of what I was talking about earlier, we don't have to pick or choose just one of these. We can definitely kind of use all of these as methods to getting towards. More affordable units, uh more pathways to ownership. We don't really have to pick one over the rest. So that was kind of the staff's thinking anyways.
I'm sort of right there with you. I think number two for sure.
First two.
Uh the first two for sure, right? And the only the number four, if you do the number two, right? So I I'm right there with you on on.
You could put number four in the code now.
Yes.
We're going to come back to the comprehensive plan process and potentially add it to this district. If it's not financially feasible for folks having it in the code.
Yes.
For us, it just provides that opportunity there. It's worth considering.
I mean. I want us to do two, two and four.
Two, two and four. Yeah, you could blend all three.
Do all of them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh huh. I'm I'm curious, though. What your guys' opinion is if we permit. Townhomes but don't require that ground floor residential be townhomes. Do we think that people would build them if it wasn't a requirement? But, you know, if we had that twenty percent requirement for the whole building, right? However much residential there is, twenty percent of it needs to be. Affordable, if it has residential units on the bottom. Would people still be interested? Would developers still be interested in building townhomes?
If they did, they'd have.
If it was, if it was permissive, right, instead of required.
So let me ask a clarifying question. Are you suggesting that we add the tw- the affordable criteria to the townhome development? Meaning that it would be an income restricted, twenty percent of the townhome projects would be income restricted.
If it was all townhomes.
If it was all townhomes.
Or maybe they build ten townhomes and, you know, thirty apartments in a building. I don't know.
Yeah.
And then the the apartments could be the affordable units, but there would still need to be twenty percent.
If there's a multifamily tax exemption to support it.
Yes, okay.
You have to have minimum, you also have to have a min number unit to qualify for multifamily property tax exemption. And townhomes may or may not get you there depending on the site size. So that's worth considering.
I just feel like the um. Having more townhomes, that is a more of affordable home that we want more be built. And we've seen how quick those are. You build them in the city, they're gone, right?
Question is, do the people who live there want more townhomes? Or do they want them to be used for neighborhood commercial stuff? So it's like this.
Sure.
I want, I want more homes, but I also am really business oriented too, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if if someone just built a townhome and then dump it, I think a developer would rather do that, but that might not be what. The people actually want these uses in their neighborhood. That's just right. That, I don't know enough yet.
That's where it kind of goes again with the commercial side of it, making sure they can only do this. We have enough.
Yeah. And housing isn't required, right?
It's all related.
Opening, opening it up so that it is a permitted use, but it would not be required. So if a developer was like, nobody wants apartments in this neighborhood, they just build commercial, right?
So it's the, they should start with the commercial and if you hit that threshold, then you have the opportunity to do residential. Is that?
That's why it's, that's why it's so important to get that right, the commercial part of it, right?
And that's why we, if if like townhomes, then if develop and flip a property, they're going to immediately. So it's just like. But.
But if it, if it's most of it's commercial, then there's a couple of townhomes. I mean, I wouldn't mind having a townhome in the middle of a. Commercial district where I can walk, right?
Do they have to do both, though? Do they have to have some commercial or would they just?
No, well, yeah, definitely will have to have commercial.
Yes, yes.
That's where, that's where I'm.
Because this is the same district.
Wrap my head around.
Because this, remember, this is the same district.
Commercial.
Neighborhood.
So if I have stupid questions, but just.
No, no, no.
Trying to question about.
That's.
I'm trying to avoid just mass of townhomes.
No.
You know, like that's what I'm worried about.
Not in our neighborhood commercial district.
Okay.
And then remember, this is connected, this is connected to the first part of our conversation that we had.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure there's a good balance there. And we're only talking about ground floor, right? And so we're only saying, okay, you can have ground floor. Um and these particular circumstances. If there's a multifamily tax exemption that we're going to talk about. And then the townhomes, I think, is okay, as long as we have a commercial there to support it. I mean, I think this can all work and you can, you can do it.
So the, just to, just to, just to be real clear, to kind of maybe clarify in the end, I'm. Well, that's a Ryan and Hans to make sure I got this right, but ultimately, the primary use of neighborhood commercial is going to be commercial type uses. That's going to be outright permitted. You're going to have um live work units that are outright permitted.
That can count towards.
But only five thousand square feet that can count towards your commercial. We get to their five fifteen foot height limit. You can also do residential if it's on the second floor.
Yeah.
So the only time you can do ground floor is if you have fifteen thousand square feet of commercial, then you can do.
Depending on the district, we're going to come back with that number.
Yeah, but, but, but again, that's, that's that scalable piece, but that's to try to address and kind of clarify for everybody. This is not, you couldn't have just ground floor residential townhomes occupy a two acre commercial, neighborhood commercial site or a six acre. It has to be a blending, it's a primary use as a commercial. Does that help?
Yeah, I think that's right, Ellen. Yeah.
Just a quick point, when, you know, those last townhomes we did. Um, you know, they were, they were slated to come in at three fifty and they ended up going for four fifty. Okay, so they crossed over the sixty percent AMI threshold and blew that out of the water. Um so, so, you know. If, if, if we, if we go down that road, how do we maintain that it stays straight?
So if you, if we adopt this so that the townhomes are market rate, then there, there isn't a way to necessarily control the market. So if the code adopt that we adopt says it has to have some percentage of that affordable. Then those ones would be required to be set at a specific AMI, whether it be sixty or eighty based on ownership or rental.
And how do we enforce that?
Covenant, MFTE has lots of checks and balances within it if they use the MFTE.
Worked on requirements.
Mm hmm, exactly.
And just a reminder, those aren't technically townhomes. They're condominiums.
They're condos.
Condos. Condos. So they, they appear from the outside to be townhomes, but they went through a different development process.
And then the difference between is, you know, townhome, if it's a. For a fee simple purchase, there's a subdivision that took all the townhomes on a plot of land. Condo, it's just the unit. And then also townhome styles can also be developed as rentals or apart.
Are, are condos allowed? In this town, in this district, okay?
I, I mean, if we authorize those.
If we authorize.
Yeah.
The type of ownership is, doesn't reflect, it's more of the unit style or room style.
Wait, you have anything you want to add to this?
I just have a clarifying question. Is, you talked about townhomes here, are you saying for sale townhomes only or would rental townhomes be permissible as well?
I would say that they'd be permissible, I mean, permitted, yeah. We don't have any language, so I'd guide that one way or the other. Uh the nice thing about townhomes is that there is a pathway to ownership that's not necessarily a requirement, whereas with multifamily. That's just not something that we see in the style of development that we're talking about. So whether or not that actually exists or not. That's on a more case by case basis that this code wouldn't touch.
That's what, that's why I like the townhomes.
And then there's also the opportunity to convert to condominiums, but you also have the condominium. Lots of issues that have, have we already talked about, but. Each one of these type of units can have a. Conversion into an ownership type, but they also can all be developed as a rental type too.
And if they were rent type, would they have to meet the, the affordable housing?
You can still do some of this, yeah.
We could, we could do that.
It would be covenant based, so on each unit, there would either be an affordability requirement or not. And that would be identified at the time of construction. Uh and then that would be carried with that specific unit uh for whatever that time designation is. Uh typically at the state level, it's defined as a fifty year covenant.
So you've heard our feedback.
Trying to figure out where we're landing here.
Have no idea of what we're talking about here or.
I think we want to come back and look at option two through our comprehensive plan.
Yes.
That's a yes.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
And then the second is permit. The townhomes, but where I'm not sure I'm clear is do we want to have the twenty percent requirement applied to that? Townhome.
I do.
Okay, yes and yes and yes. Okay.
Is it not make sense to be higher than twenty percent? Is that just crazy?
I think it'd be hard.
It aligns.
That's what I'm wanting.
And then the AMI threshold will be based on whether it's ownership or rental under, under um.
Yeah.
The MFTE regulations.
Yeah, ownership is at eighty percent and rental is at sixty percent.
Because you, can you apply the multifamily, you can't apply the multifamily tax exemption to a townhome.
Well, you can, but it can't have the property lines running through it. So it's, it has to be. It's the rental, it's, it's got to be a multifamily complex essentially. So that, because for, for the purposes of the multifamily tax exemption, multifamily is defined as not having a property line running through it.
Okay.
And then we will, I mean, this is in the future, but we will be working through code amendments or middle housing ordinance that will do things like create, you know, lots of subdivisions. To allow those townhomes to be on individual lots with affordable pieces in that. So in the future, we can expand on these opportunities by adding some of that within the code. As, as that comes before the council. It would be incremental process, however, this today and then that potentially in the future.
So then. It's, sounds to me, it's like yes on all two, three and four, two, three and four, right? With a twenty percent also applying to townhomes.
And would we still want to be able to allow ground floor apartments, ground, ground related apartment units with the twenty percent?
On, only if we address the multifamily tax exemption.
Okay, okay.
Do we do all three?
At least twenty percent.
Yes.
Gives more play.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
We're never gonna.
I think those. Clarify, multifamily tax exemption orders specifies twenty percent and no more than thirty percent can be uh affordable. And that's always something too that council can take another revisit at in the future and. When you address and apply the multifamily or look at applying multifamily taxes, where you can also look at the orgs and what those specifications are.
But we will bring the MFTE back at a later date.
You feel like you got it?
I think we got it.
Got it? Okay?
Yeah, I really appreciate you going to adjust the MFTE program because. Really, to, to make affordable housing work as from a developer standpoint, we've got to have.
We totally understand that, yeah. Yeah, we understand. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So this is a reminder.
Yes.
Take this information, put it into final ordinance form. Um so we'll do some modifications to the recommended version that the planning commission provided and then bring that back to you at a regular meeting hopefully within the next. Few weeks.
Sounds good.
Hopefully not too long.
That's, sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Made it through that. Okay, then our last agenda IM is the South Sound Senior Services Campaign. Against loneliness and isolation.
My gosh, you must have to stand up and stretch, right?
Uh yeah.
At least I get to do that. Um and I've never spoken after sewage and ground, ground floor hygiene before. I don't know if that'll ever happen again. Thank you for your time. Um it's good to see you all and well. I, I never want to see this group and not start with the celebration of the Virgil Clarkson Lacy Senior Center. Um because it is just a beautiful, beautiful place. I was there on Friday and had lunch. Um and I walked in and the people said, it's quiche today. You gotta go have the quiche. I got there kind of late for lunch. I was like, yeah, I had the quiche. Uh packed with people, you know, I'm eating lunch and then in the room next door, you've all been there, there's a fitness class going on and there's like thirty people in there. I don't, I don't know if it was Zumba or enhanced fitness or something. They were having a great time. And then I walked out and there was a bereavement support group happening in the. Back room. Brighter days has happened. I mean. It's just an amazing place. So thank you.
I stopped by there with my daughter who's home from college and she just wants to volunteer to help make food.
Yeah.
For Meals on Wheels program. So we stopped by there and said hello to everyone. It was, it was always great. Everyone's. You know, it was bustling and I just kept on thinking, boy, do we have enough space for what we're trying to do here? But yes.
Well, phase three, Jen and I are starting the conversation about phase three. Um. I hope he does volunteer. My son.
She's trying.
Uh is in college now, but he volunteered at the Olympia Center helping make meals and. Something I appreciate about it, when you go there, is the diversity of people. And I mean, every kind of diversity of people.
Yes.
That, I know there's people there with plenty of money. You know, they're, they go there to socialize. There's people there who are struggling. There's people there of every walk of life. We get people of all these different language groups. Um, you know, the Korean elders group.
Yep.
I mean, it, it's Lacey.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a really beautiful thing.
It's, it's hard not to have a smile come into your face when you walk.
Yeah, exactly. And I say, I've said it before, but I would put that senior center against any senior center in the state for. For the building, the vitality of it. Uh I think it's just a.
Media's mission, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. The partnership, I, I think that, I don't know how you could do it better. I, I don't really, don't know how. You know, I'm not here tonight to talk about that. I can't sit in this group and not mention that. I'm here to talk about something that I was just at the health board speaking about, and I appreciate Robin being in back to back meetings. Uh and that is something that Rick and I have spoken about. And I'm not going to ask you to do anything, so this is, you can, after compared to what you just had to wrestle with, this is easy. But what's not easy is that uh it's a good time for me to come to the council and to speak about this because. I may be coming back to you in the future um with, with more to talk about. Um today, when I was at the health board, I was there to speak with the health board about. The, what the surgeon general calls the national epidemic of isolation and loneliness in our community. And that report that came out last year was eye opening for me and for many people. Because it outlined the health impacts of being isolated and lonely. In my family, you know, we had Aunt Verna lived alone and she was kind of sad about that, but that's, we just thought it was a bummer. You know, um but it's as bad for our health. Uh as smoking, which we know is not good for us, right? You may do it, but it's not good for you. Uh it's as bad for our health as diabetes. And it increases uh your chances, your, not your chances, but we're all going to pass away, but your. Um mortality increases uh likelihood sooner and your chances for dementia, Alzheimer's, cognitive illnesses. Goes up significantly. It's all in that report that the surgeon general put out. So that came out. We saw it. We're a senior serving organization, right? We know that this is an issue among seniors. But the report highlighted that it's, and we know this from family, if you have kids or grandkids, that it's an issue among teens. The, the rate of suicidal ideation is really high now. Teens' mental health is uh challenged uh in increasing ways. And the reporting, even though they're in school all day, you know, print, many of them, with hundreds of people, they're, they feel lonely. And they feel isolated. And so we're in a real national moment around this and we didn't get here yesterday. We're not going to solve this tomorrow. You know, it's, it's not an easy thing. But what I want to share with you all as the council is that Senior Services has taken this on as a real focus. In fact, we've chosen it as a theme of our work this year. We've always been working on it in some way. We didn't know it, but we were always trying to get people connected, right? Um but we really are laser focused on it this year. And I have been, we're doing that internally, my board, in our newsletters and in our activities, in our discussions. We're talking about how can, what new programs can we start? How can we better help the senior community? Be less isolated and stay better connected and to understand that the health impacts are severe. Uh so we're trying to raise awareness about it. Because only twenty percent of people in this uh surgeon general report identified that they understand that being. Isolated lonely is bad for their health, only twenty percent, right? So there's a big gap between that and the reality. And then uh we also want to take whatever actions we can to, to help address the issue. And that's where you all come in. So the city already does all sorts of things to try to get people to be connected, right? You have a fantastic park system, I think you, Jen. Um and programs here and there and everywhere that are, that are opportu- opportunities to take classes and, and get engaged and so on. And so it's not like we're not all trying. But we have to admit, I think, to some, I said this earlier, we have to admit that to some extent we're failing. You know, we're trying, but it's not quite working well enough because it, it's considered now a national epidemic. And it's a local issue as well. And so I spoke with the health board and they're in conversation just starting today, but we're going to continue the conversation about. What the, what the county level thinks about this and, and to what way that they choose to address it. There's a county in California, San Mateo County, that declared a public health crisis. And I presented that as an option today to the health board. Uh I've met with Rick and Jay and Lisa, city, city uh leadership staff. And they're all, they all nod their heads and understand that this is an issue and we all sort of grapple with what can we do? And so uh what I, what I'd like to present to you tonight is simply that I think you all understand in your own ways that this is an issue. Uh if you have young people in your life, kids or grandkids, nephews, nieces. If you have elders in your life, especially, it's easy to end up alone because your spouse passes away. Um or you may have lived alone all your life and then you're seventy five or eighty, right? And not as mobile, so it's hard to get out and be as connected as you once were. Um so we know this is an issue in Lacey and we know you already do a lot to um, to try to address these sorts of things. But we need to try to do more. And we can do a lot just by raising awareness in the community. Um and we have existing vehicles for doing that, right? You have city communications. But really talking specifically about. Being isolated and being lonely is a threat to your health. It's really, don't take it seriously. It's not just a, it's not just a sadness that it affects your health. And that ways you can address that are existing programs in the city. The YMCA, Senior Services for South Sound, you know, and you have a long list of other ways you could. The YMCA, Senior Services for South Sound, you know, and you long list of other ways you can get connected. So I I am here tonight simply to raise your awareness about this, that we are working on this. We're in partnership with YMCA in the United Way and the library system. Uh, on this, I'm working with the council health board, starting to, it's my first time speaking with you about it and I simply want to. Raise your awareness that this is something we're, this group of people is actively working on. And we may come back in the future, I may come back and see if there's something specific to do, but in the meantime. I think just having conversations among yourselves, your own family, um along the city staff. And the citizens that you serve to to take it seriously. We've talked at the health board today about how there was a time when I was a little kid. Um, both my parents smoked like most of their generation did and there was, I I was born in sixty eight, I don't care what age I am, I'm fifty five. Uh, and when I was a kid in the early seventies, you know, that's when the anti-smoking campaigns started. And my parents were like, what? Anti-smoke, you know, like everybody smoked. But they showed us pictures of lungs from people who smoked and it scared the heck out of me when I was in fifth grade, right? Like sex education and anti-smoking education and we've come along.
Us gen Xers, they just said we're going to drop dead at any moment. I don't do anything, you will die. That's why we were raised.
And so, you know, it basically it it we got to a place where there's massive public awareness around. The physical dangers of smoking and you can choose to do it. That's fine, it's a lifestyle choice, basically. Uh, but but there's no question about that and we're not there with this issue. We need to get there with this issue where people may still choose, of course, to be, choose to be isolated, they're 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 going to be alone. But at least their family will know, it's not great for their health, right? We need to try to get grandma active or go see grandma more often or Uncle Bob or whoever it is. So the final thing is that um by way of being connected. Your city manager is going to be connected by going over the edge at Huntermore Park. On June twenty ninth and you can show up and support him because Senior Services is doing an event at um the gambling commission building. That and we're going to be uh rappelling off the top of the building down to in at the Huntermore Park and Rick has signed up to do it. And we have.
Insurance.
Yes, yes. So it is, we have, we have, um. It's really cool, actually. It's really great. We have grandmothers doing it with their grandchildren. I'm doing it with my eighty-five year old father in law. Um, my HR director of my organization, her ten year old son is doing it. Um, they've take this as an organization that does all over North America. They've taken down people in wheelchairs. Uh, they've taken down two people who are a hundred and four. Um, so you're rappelling and. You're, if you've ever rock climbed before, which I used to be uh that way, you know, you're rappelling, you rappel yourself normally. But this is the perception of risk, but you do have some control, but there's a safety line connected to you. So if you. If you go to sleep on the way down, um, you you are, you're you can't just, you can't fall basically. So but the perception of risk is real. When you're standing on the top of a building, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be uh frightening. So June twenty ninth at Huntermore Park, uh, an event that supports Senior Services. You're all invited to be there, participate, support Rick and his campaign. Um, it'd be great. So thank you for your time and any questions.
Yeah, so I was wondering if we have an update on our the home rent, um, the home sharing program, right? Because that's. That's something that uh was been supported by this council, right? It was a former. City manager Scott Spence, we're like, let's let's try to figure this out and it's like, what if what if we can get people to uh especially seniors to room together? Um, the the one thing that we did find, every, you know, every good intention, you know, the consequences of good intentions, right? One of the things that we've, I found out since we started this program, which has been unfortunate, is that some of these seniors have a. Um, um, who own their own homes, um, they're restricted by income. Right? And so uh all of a sudden you have someone move in. Now they're receiving extra dollars and now they uh no longer um can qualify for benefits. Specifically, they don't qualify for their senior uh tax exemption for property taxes. And so I know the state has looked at that with our actually county assessor and said, hey, let's see if we can write. Raise that up a little bit and make some more exceptions. Yeah, it's. Obviously, we didn't think about that when we were we were doing that, but I was just curious how man, how's that program going? You know, what can you report out?
Yes, no good deed goes unpunished, right? It's going fantastic. By that I mean that um the the staff, we have one and a half staff. Funny how you split people in half, but sure, we have one and a half staff.
We have one and a half staff here too.
Exactly. Um, and the the placements are going, we are doing about two placements a month. Uh, and uh it's going really well. It's it is, it's, we've learned a lot, sure, Andy, we've learned a lot. It it is. It how you match people in the conditions we have, because we're a senior serving organization, one of the two people must be a senior, but. We're we're agnostic on whether the other person is, right? So and who has housing in our county is typically seniors. And so, but some of our matches are younger people living with the seniors, so that's fine, great, yeah. And it's matchmaking. So the hard the hardest thing with it, besides that being a question, the hardest thing is that. It's a matchmaking service, so you know, if we've got Malcolm and we we, you know, he wants to, let's say he's got the house. And we've got Andy looking for housing, well, what is Andy like? What is Malcolm like? Uh, you know, that's that's complicated. So it's like fiddler on the roof, you know, if you've if you've seen that, you know, it's like matchmaking. So it's going well. Uh, we really appreciate the city of Lacey's leadership and, you know, it was seed support from the city that made that. Program start. Since then, we've uh received support from the regional housing council, the city of Olympia. Um, and we work in the communities that have supported us, right? So we we actually work more in Lacey than we do. Other places because your city is supporting that effort. I don't have numbers of how many Lacey, I could get that for you, but I don't have that.
I just, it'd be great to have a little check in. It was Lacey's leadership that got this started. And we started it and then, of course, COVID happened and we like, I don't know, and then we had to restart it again, so.
Rebecca Hutchinson is the program manager and she's really top notch. Uh, and so I'd love to have her come if if this council would like to have her.
I think it'd be great for her to come and give a quick presentation, because the more if we can get the information out, the more we can help with what we're talking about here. Is isolation, this is one way you can help them.
Absolutely. I'll I'll work with Rick and whenever you'd like her to come.
We like to work at a council, regular council meeting, presentation format that we can.
And that's what I was going to say, if we can like. Highlight the nexus between that program that Lacey's championed in the past and continues to. And this issue of isolation and loneliness. Um, I wanted to add to.
Because it addresses that.
Yes, it addresses.
This is one of the things that we can do is, you know, arrange to not be alone so often. I think some of the changes to statute that Representative Bateman championed, I think the the shared housing model, which. It's like sort of dorm housing is how I keep thinking about it is another potential option. And I mentioned this last year when we had that legislative briefing was that might be one way of making it so that people don't feel so alone is that we can have shared living spaces. But one of the statistics that I don't remember if it was you that shared or Chris, but. When the surgeon general put out this um. This report, it showed that only twenty percent of people that were surveyed in a large national survey. Knew that isolation and loneliness could affect your health in these negative ways. And so. Just wanted to highlight what Brian is saying, that we have an opportunity to raise awareness that this has a a really measurable negative impact, like. Twenty-six and twenty-nine percent increases in premature death for loneliness and social isolation, like those are. Those are not joke numbers. That's almost a third more likely to have premature death. That's equivalent to smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. Like, many people would not make the choice to smoke fifteen cigarettes a day because they saw those ads. Saw the ads about the lungs, um, but they don't, we we don't feel it yet, how important it is that we are not always alone or lacking.
You don't feel unless you are alone, right?
And even then, you might not realize like, oh, this is having like an impact on my body, not just my heart.
We lose, we lose people and we don't know why, right? We we just, they they passed away.
Lingered.
Yes.
So just on a personal note, this is actually been a topic that's been pretty close to me for for a long time. One of the hardest things I've dealt in my life is my dad isolated himself for probably about the last ten or fifteen years of his life and. I saw the just decline in health consistently over that amount of time. So he passed at sixty-nine. And then I just got back from Virginia today visiting my uncle who is ninety-six and lives in retire retirement community there. Um. He just, he's been dealing with prostate cancer for about five years, um, and he just a little trip to the hospital. And so getting there, all he talked about was just getting back on the golf course and then going around the community. All he talked about was getting to breakfast. With everybody, you know, and so, you know, genetically, not that much difference, you know, one's living till a hundred and one's living. In really poor health, you know, till their mid sixties. So it does, it it makes a an enormous difference and we need to get back to having more of a sense of community, so. Just to put a real life example on on what you're talking about.
Well, and that's something that we need to continue to think about. As a community, I like, and you know, that's why we're. We love our ADU programs, right? I mean, anything that we can do to, there was a, there was a time for a long time, families. Like, you know, your grandparents moved in with you, that was just the way the family unit existed. And then all of a sudden. That doesn't exist anymore. And we all, we have to make sure is there, is there anything in our code that is preventing? Stuff like that from happening. And that's one of the things that we saw with, you know, people, we just need to keep that top of mind, you know? Let's make not make sure that we're doing something that's making it harder for families to be together and live together, right? From a, from a code standpoint.
My in my in-laws, my wife's parents um are eighty-five and eighty-three and they have been thrilled to live at Panorama now for some time. Because they have all the social, they can, all the activities and social connection because they're smart about it. They don't want to be. They had a beautiful home on Bainbridge, big fancy house to themselves, you know, they'd done well. And they moved to Panorama and gave up all of that space so they could be around other people. And so I I hear you. I agree completely that. We, it's a sign of a sign of success as Americans, not to get philosophical, is isolation. We aspire to isolate. More space around us, you know, that's a sign of success, uh, but we we pay the price for that, we do.
Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up and this is something I we all care deeply about and so if the city of Lacey can. Can help in any way, we will, we'll do what we can for sure, because we know, we all know how you just, you don't have to. Think that hard on this issue to imagine what it would be like to be isolated and alone and what that would do to each one of us, right?
We are in this together.
We are. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So um without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.